Stacy.
Shall I sing?
Only once, let everyone do their own.
Everything good? Things good?
Good? Am I on, Stacy?
Yeah.
Good evening. We good?
On that gamble.
I know. We good? All good. Good evening, before we get started, I'd like to welcome Sarah Ledarc, who will lead us in our invocation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, would you please pray with me? Dear Lord, may we begin by asking for you to grant peace to the loved ones of nearly 6,000 Georgians that have lost their lives to COVID-19. May we remember that while this is a mild inconvenience to most of us, we have many vulnerable neighbors. May we not take for granted the luxury of a home to work from and the flexibility to homeschool our children. Let us not forget those who do not have these options. Help us to simplify our activities and traditions so we can focus on caring for and protecting each other. Tonight, we pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. We ask that you would graciously grant them confidence in their knowledge of what is good and fitting. We pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who choose to make Milton their home. It is in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, September 9th, 2020, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, that's right, good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. I will be happy to call roll for the September 9th, 2020, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. Please confirm your attendance, Councilmember Rick Morgue.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Mayor Protem Peyton Jamison.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookley.
Here.
And Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
For the record, Mayor Joe Lockwood and Councilmember Paul Moore are absent. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please say on the next item?
The next item is approval of meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 20239.
Thank you, I'd like to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition and personnel. That can be in the motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I think we may need to discuss potential litigation as well.
Okay, so scratch that, I would like to have a motion to add executive, add executive session to discuss land acquisition, personnel, and potential litigation. Everything.
Mayor, I'd like to make, Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda with the addition of an executive session for land acquisition, personnel, and potential litigation.
Second. I already have a motion from Councilmember Bentley and a second from Councilmember Cookerly, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Tammy, is there any general public comment this evening?
I've not been given any, Stacy, do you have any through? No, sir, we do not have any.
Okay, so that will, no public comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk say on the items?
Our first item is approval of the August 3rd, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 20240. Next is the approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending July 2020, Agenda Item Number 20241. Our third item is approval of a construction services agreement with DAF Concrete Inc. for the construction of the Cogburn Road Sidewalk Improvement Program, Agenda Item Number 20242. Our fourth item is approval of an agreement between City of Milton, Georgia, and Open Edge, a subsidiary of Global Payments Direct Inc. for electronic payment processing services that integrate with Ncode, Agenda Item Number 20243. Our fifth item is approval of a professional services agreement with Davis Engineering and Survey for Survey and Platt Services, Agenda Item Number 20244. Next is the approval of a task order between the City of Milton and Pond and Company, Inc. to provide preliminary engineering for Morse Road Widening, Agenda Item Number 20245. Our seventh item is approval of a change order number one to the agreement between the City of Milton and Low Engineers to provide temporary plan review services for July through September of 2020, Agenda Item Number 20246. Our eighth and final consent item is the approval of a change order number one agreement between the City of Milton and the Atlanta Regional Commission, known as the ARC, to extend the end date of the contract to December the 10th, 2020, related to the city's Smart Communities Grant Project, the Walking School Bus, Agenda Item Number 20247.
Thank you, is there a motion on the consent agenda as read?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read by clerk.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria and a second from Councilmember Morgue, is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Moving on to reports from presentation, will the city clerk please say on the first item?
Our first item is the proclamation recognizing suicide prevention, Mayor Protem Peyton Jamison.
Thank you, I know this is a important week, I know we have a lot of people in the crowd with the LRJ Foundation that has been working on this, and I know Councilmember Bentley would like to say some remarks after I read this proclamation, and then we'll come up and take a picture. So this is the Recognizing National Suicide Prevention Week. Whereas, National Suicide Prevention Week is an annual week-long campaign in the United States to inform and engage health professionals and the general public about suicide prevention and the warning signs of suicide, running this year from September 6th to September 12th. And World Suicide Prevention Day is recognized annually on September 10th. And whereas, suicide is now the second-leading cause of death among Americans ages 15 to 24, and whereas, one of the myths about suicide is that talking about it causes suicide, when research shows the opposites, the opposite, since engaging someone in a deliberate, caring conversation about suicide can be a critical first step toward preventing suicide. And whereas, the city of Milton constantly strives to provide the best quality of life for its residents, young and old, by finding ways to create strong sense of community, well-informed populace, and provide invaluable connectedness, and whereas, if Milton is to be the best place to call home, we must be willing to discuss difficult topics like suicide, recognizing that talking about suicide can remove the stigma and help save lives. And whereas, all members of the city of Milton take responsibility together to do all that we can to support and guide our citizens, through our service, we care for one another and strengthen Milton's cherished sense of community. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton proclaim September 10th to be Suicide Prevention Day in Milton, and we actively demonstrate the city's commitment to citizens' health and well-being by partnering with the LRJ Foundation to host a virtual forum, the Milton Mental Wellness Webinar, on Thursday, September 10th. This event aims to stimulate a community conversation about suicide while sharing resources and tools for improving mental wellness, given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on this ninth day of September 2020. Thank you, and Councilmember Bentley?
Now, I'd like to thank our city, you know, we embrace our quality of life and recognizing that suicide is a part of our community. This is the second year that we have not just participated but hosted a suicide event, so I'm tremendously proud of that, and I know that this council is as well. I'd like to have a special moment of thanks to Teresa Rusby, who is in the, in the audience tonight. She has worked tirelessly to reinvent a suicide awareness event into a mental wellness, and it's got a great message, and I'm so proud of the work that she's done with our staff and the expertise that her LRJ members bring to the conversation, which is tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, and it's via Zoom and Facebook Live, so please tune in, it's going to be awesome. Thank you so much.
Carol?
You know, there are many things that I would appreciate, publicly appreciate, and thank Councilwoman Bentley for, but this is at the top of my list because without her leadership on this and her constant efforts on social media to keep this issue top of mind, I don't know that Milton would have such a robust awareness. And so, Councilwoman, I just want you to know that your efforts are not missed by me or anybody, but we are lucky that you're in your perseverance and your dedication to this issue and other issues.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, if y'all want to come up, we'll take pictures and give you the proclamation. They're gonna stand down here, we're gonna stand up there.
Get a little closer, six feet.
It's still a wide-angle lens, right?
It is. Thank you. Greg, let's get the ladder. I need you to picture.
In the last six months. This is the first one, right?
Yeah.
I'm smiling behind that.
Thank you.
You smiled behind your mask.
Thank you again, I really appreciate it, thank you.
And there's a for you.
Will the city clerk please say on the next item?
If you need more, just let me know, okay? Thank you so much. Our next item is the 2020 Census Update, that's presented by Ms. Michelle McIntosh Ross.
Thank you. Okay, good, we're already here, greetings, greetings, I'm Michelle McIntosh Ross, City of Milton. So I'm here to talk about the census again, just want to reiterate, because we need everyone counted. This is the last month, so we're really doing a big push for the last month to get everyone counted in the city of Milton. And you've seen a lot of this before, but I have some slides on here, like QR codes and whatnot, so folks at home can use their phone and go straight to the census. So I'm hoping that folks at home, you know, are listening, and who went here before, I would get some of this information. So we need everyone to take part in the 2020 census, and here's our QR code. Okay? We want to get an accurate population count for the city of Milton, this is very important. It allocates federal dollars for the next 10 years, so folks can still respond, you know, all the way to the end of September, by going to the website, or calling, or mailing in their form, so they're still able to do that. Okay? So today, I'm gonna talk about, you know, what the census is and why we need to do it, and then also just mention some of the local preparation that we did, you know, years ago to come to this point, and then why it's important locally, and we're gonna show some of the things that we're gonna be doing this month to get everyone counted, and then of course, we have questions and dialogue. Okay, so why, so it's an official count of the population, it happens every 10 years, it's in the Constitution since 1790. It, the US commemorates Census Day April 1st every 10 years, and for the last census 10 years ago, the estimate was that it allocated roughly $675 billion federal dollars, and that goes to things like roads, schools, hospitals, social programs, et cetera. So it's really important because non-response to the census questionnaire can result in an undercount for the population, which results in that estimate when you divide it up as 1,600 per each person in Georgia. It's used to determine the legislative representatives, every level of government, you know, the population defines drawing the Georgia representative lines, as well as Milton Council districts. And so it can skew a lot of the lines if we don't have an accurate count. This was from the previous census, some states gained, some states lost, Georgia happened to gain, hopefully we won't lose this time. This is the census, it happens once every 10 years, and it counts every person once in the right place, that's what it's meant to do, it's also the civic duty of every person to participate. It's only 10 questions, or roughly, it's like seven plus dropdowns, you'll see, I have some questions in the later slide. And it's available in 12 languages over the phone, and you can request for any language that you need. All of the data collection is private, and just to mention, in 2010, our population logged in at 32,661, and so we'll see what we turn out to be this year, you know, folks like me always anxiously waiting on what the population estimate, or actually the actual population would be. So we're thinking 40,039, we'll see, we didn't do a bet on it, but we'll see. These are the questions that shows up on the census, so all we want to know is how many people are living or staying at the house in April, whether the house is owned or rented, what the genders are for each person, age, race of each person, and whether the person is Hispanic or of Latino origin, and what the relationship is to the head person in the household, so is it your uncle, your sister, your daughter, whatever. So all things we should know already, you don't have to research any of this. So this is just the breakdown of the funding, if we took, this is just an example, if we took that 1,600 per person in Georgia over the 10 years, that will equal 1.6 million. Let's just say we missed, you know, 100 people on the census in 2010, that works out to be that, you know, we missed the 1.6 million. Just looking at response rates, for instance, Georgia, I believe, may have responded at 72% last time for 2010. So at that rate, with, you know, 10.5 million residents, right, at 72% responding, we only, you know, calculated 7.56 people in Georgia, which, you know, we were short 2.9, also people, which translates into, you know, the dollar amount of something like 47 billion missing from the coffers in Georgia. And so if you relate to Milton, we responded back in 2010 at roughly 85 maybe, or 87%, but of course, it's just for demonstration. So if we responded at 87%, and we have estimated 40,000 Milton residents, then we would be short, right, we would be counting only 34,800 people, which would cause us to be short by 5,200 folks, and then translating to, you know, 83 million that we would be missing. So it's really important that everybody should count, but of course, this is all over 10 years, you're right, so it all calculates out. So again, we just want folks to respond, because it distributes all these federal dollars throughout the state, and of course, Milton gets its share, and I think I mentioned some of these before with the screwing up the lines. This is a map of our council districts, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about how the census pertains to all of the departments, you know, in city government, with getting sales tax share throughout the county, it's based on the census data of population size, as well as the T-Splus dollars. Of course, public works relates back to the T-Splus dollars with projects and funding for those. You know, the public safety, the insurance that was reading for the public safety, it relates back to the population number, as well as crime stats, it's always based on population, parks and rec, level of service, committed, community development and economic development, need those numbers for long-range planning, we're doing our comprehensive plan now, and, you know, those numbers are really important as far as how we're gonna plan for the next 10, 20 years, et cetera. And then the grants, grants that we apply for, and, you know, we've been getting some grants lately, a lot of these, you know, are based on the population and what the information that the census gathers. Some grant opportunities, just, you know, it's evidence-based funding, which all of that data comes from the census. Also, for the state of Georgia, they get their federal money to fund the grant part that we apply for, comes from the census that the, that we collect in order to allocate money to Georgia. So there's, you know, it's really important for Georgia and Milton to get the accurate count so that we can divvy up all these things accurately. Real quick, I have one slide on all of the work we've been doing. So back in 2017, as you can see, we had a resolution in November to say that we are gonna participate in the census and participate in the local update of the census addresses, which we worked on between 17, 18, and 19, to make sure the Census Bureau had all of the accurate addresses for Milton to be able to do the count and send the letters out and so on. We, in that project, we were able to submit an additional 2,376 addresses that they did not have. There was also another program that we worked on closer to the census, which ended October of 2019, which was to submit any new construction permits and so on for homes that we thought would be finished by April of 2020, and so we submitted that, and it was like 300-plus new addresses there. And then I'll get to a slide where we're talking about all of the things that we're doing this year, that we did and what we'll do for September, our communication and engagement. Folks have been very helpful with coming up with strategies to get out to folks the information and to increase our response rate for the census, we'll talk about that a little bit. So here is a map of the census response rate for the city of Milton, this is available on the website. So right now, today, when I checked it, our self-response rate for the city of Milton is 72.2%. You'll see the different census tracts on here, and I went ahead and just put the response for two of the census tracts, I couldn't fill this map up too much, but that darkest blue, which is, looks almost black, is responding at... black, is responding at 87% total for that census tract. So that's really good. All of the darker blues are, you know, above 75%. So those are a good responding. We do have a low responding census tract here, which is along 400, Winwood Parkway, Deerfield, Morris Road, et cetera. And that census tract is responding at 48.3%. So we really need, you know, some more response in that area. And I'll pick on that area a little bit when I go into the projects, but I just wanted us to see where we were with that. Now, back in 2010, Milton responded, self-response rate was the same as right now, it was 72.2. So we actually have just met our previous response rate from 2010. I just threw in on the slide there the other cities in our area and what they're doing, but we don't need to mention them. Let's see. So here's the T-Splus that was approved back in 2016. So basically, this whole funding mechanism, you see Alfredo's on there, Johns Creek, Milton, Mountain Park, et cetera. It's based, the, divvying up all of the money is based on the population. So it says, you know, what the population for each of these cities are. And so then that's how they allot the money. And they've just taken that number from the census. So if you have an accurate count, then this really helps. And if we have a better response rate than the rest of folks, it really helps even more. But just wanted to let you know this, and this just shows that it's a piece of the pie. We'll get what we get based on, on the count. So yes, I did say I was going to pick on that census tract that wasn't responding. So we have T-Splus projects in there, as you can see, along, which one is that? Morris Road widening? And then we have a project on Winwood Parkway. And, you know, we're waiting on, you know, collecting all of those funds through T-Splus and of course, other funding mechanisms. But, you know, you know, being a low responding area, if we had more counts, you know, we'd probably have more of the proportion of, of that, that dollar amount for these projects. Also, we just concluded our trails prioritization plan and we have all of these really wonderful projects in the Deerfield area that we want to do. We have different tiers and it's all based on funding. Of course, we're using additional funding, impact fees and so on, but some of the funding is T-Splus and sales tax and whatever we can use. And, you know, the quicker we can get the funding, it'll be better. So if anyone is out there in this area and you like these projects, you should fill out your census so that we can get those counts. This is just a summary, you know, just to take part in the census, all the dollars that we'll be missing out. So this is what I wanted to get at. It is getting the residents counted. Like I said, our communication and community engagement staff has been working really hard on this September with weekly updates. We posted this on our website so that folks can see it, have a presence as soon as you go to the website. Social media, we've been doing that weekly, also getting into the Herald and the Neighbor and the Patch newspapers, talking with the school boards, teachers. We sent letters out to our kids, school and teachers, the principals, also the faith-based folks, we want them to spread the word. We have signs that are going out and census signs are already out and you've seen those around. I also put the census on our upcoming community engagement for the comprehensive plan. That was Greg's idea. Thanks Greg to go ahead and put a link to the census on there. So those signs will be out there and we'll be able to capture those folks who are interested in comprehensive planning can go ahead and hopefully if they hadn't filled their census out, they can do so. We're also making calls and emailing businesses, HOAs, the apartment complexes and civic organizations. We're working with the census personnel to see how we can combine efforts. We had, we allowed the census folks to use our community place to do training and they concluded the training, maybe a week or it's about two or three weeks ago. And so they've been going door to door through the month of September to get folks counted. But again, we want people to go online and go ahead and self-respond. Let's see, we have flyers that we're putting out at gas stations and stores. We got Chick-fil-A to commit to having give out information at the Chick-fil-A line. So that's a lot of people, right? You know, in that Chick-fil-A line at lunch. So that was a really good and had a good idea. That was Anita's idea. Let's see, we want to, we're going to have a specific to Deerfield, the Deerfield corridor to include a digital sign out there. Also, I think it's on the 15th, I forget which day, we're going to have COVID testing. So we're going to have signs, yeah, September 15th at Stone Creek Church. So over in that area during that COVID testing, we're going to have signs and flyers and hopefully a presence out there to help push the, the response in that area as folks come out there to get tested. We're going to have our firefighters help spread the word. I don't know if you know or remember when the Fulton County had their challenge for doing a video, our firefighters came in second. So we see that that's a good idea to use our firefighters to help get that word out. Also, we're challenging our inspectors and other folks who go out into the field to mention the census whenever we do that. Also, the library is doing a, at the book drop off, they'll have signage and so on there. And, oh, at the upcoming public safety event, we're going to mention the census. So folks who come out, of course, that's also in Deerfield, so that's a good place to mention it. And then we're going to hopefully hold a neighborhood popsicle event to, to cap this all off. So if you guys think of anything else that we hadn't thought of or, you know, just encourage folks to, to sign up also, folks who, maybe they signed up, but their neighbors didn't sign up and census workers are out, you can let census worker know what's going on, like how many people are in that house or what have you. I had somebody, census worker come up my driveway. So they, somebody in my neighborhood didn't respond. But, but yeah, just, you know, get the word out. It's the last push to, to get census out. So the main thing, the message we want to send is that you can still respond online or via phone or send in the mail. You don't have to wait for folks to come out and knock on your door. And everyone can play their role in the 2020 census by encouraging their friends and family to participate. So any questions we have?
Any questions for Michelle? All right. Thank you.
Okay. So great. So hopefully this will help folks at home to sign up for the census. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please sound the final presentation item?
The final item is presentation of lighting proposals for Hopewell Road, at Hamby Road and Hopewell Road, at Thompson Road Roundabouts. Mr. Robert Drury.
Good evening, Mayor Protim Council. Back in February, we made a presentation to you about the lighting of these two roundabout projects. At that time, we didn't really have good cost. We're at the point now where we do have some good cost. So I'm going to go through a rather short presentation, kind of explain what we're looking at as far as the lighting and the costs therein. And hopefully by the end of this presentation, we'll be able to get some sort of a guidance from the, from the council. In February, we did make the presentation and the general consensus that came out of that, if you haven't gone back and listened to the meeting, is in favor of some decorative lighting. There was some favorable responses to put in decorative lighting. And of the decorative lighting, I think the consensus was those shepherd hooks. So if you recall at that presentation, we presented this slide. This is existing lighting options that do occur in the city of Milton and the shepherd hooks being the one on the far right. I should have numbered these, these and I did not, but the two middle ones are typically pedestrian lighting and for what we're going to light up, they're really not applicable to roundabouts. But the three on the left, we'll talk about a little bit, and the shepherd hook on the, on the far right. So these are lighting options that do exist in the city of Milton. This slide shows you those two roundabouts, Hopewell at Thompson and the upper right being Hopewell at Hamby. The lights, basically on the routes as you're approaching those intersections, you see each individual dot is an existing light. Typically those lights, I just went dark. Thank you. So each one of those dots are lights that exist out there now. And typically those lights are either those Cobra headlights with a masked arm or some sort of a spotlight. So as you see, when you approach these intersections, there are some dark areas in here. Hamby is dark before you approach Hopewell and it's like Thompson at Bell Memorial Park is fairly dark, of course, when there's games on, that, that area is lit up pretty well. But that gives you an idea of some of the existing lights that are out there. So what we've done is we've approached Georgia Power. These two roundabouts are served by Power from SONI. SONI does not provide the shepherd hook decorative lights. So we went to the Georgia Power lighting. It's a separate group from Georgia Power and received proposals from them. We're going to get into those costs, but the proposal is based on this lighting arrangement. You see Thompson and Hopewell, there's 14 of the shepherd hook lights. And Hopewell at Hamby, there's nine of the roadway shepherd lights. This will meet the lighting standard. If you recall at the February meeting, we did introduce to you the Georgia DOT standard on illuminations. This will meet those illumination standards and Georgia Power pretty much does that for every lighting event they have. So that gives you an idea of the lighting proposed and the cost for those decorative lights. And we'll try to describe this as best I can. And I don't, the mouse is not working on your screen. So I'll kind of walk through this a little bit. We received bids for the construction of those roundabouts inside those bids. Thank you. In those bids, we did get cost for contractor, for the contractor to install the shepherd hook lights. And these are the costs that came out of those bids. Thompson, the upfront cost is $130,000. Hamby, the upfront cost is $90,000. The meter is a monthly cost, the power, and that's based on current costs that we have now for those types of lights. So it's $140 a month. And there is a service fee if the contractor installs these lights. If the lights go out or if they have problems or a car hits it, the city of Milton would have to pay for those repairs. That's if the contractor installs the light. Also in that bid, we do have good prices for underground work. That's the conduit the contractor will have to put into the ground. So the conduit installation for Thompson is 52,000 and the conduit installation for Hamby is 41,000. The Georgia Power proposal that was given to us is slightly different and it's based on the same lighting plan that you see, that I showed you. And the initial cost is 83,464 at Thompson and 53,000 and some change at Hamby. For Georgia Power, there would be an agreement if we chose to go that option. I'll present to the council in a future meeting, an agreement with Georgia Power to install these lights. And that would be a monthly service charge of $350 a month for Thompson and $225 a month per light for, for Hamby. But that is total repair costs. If the lights go out or if it's hit by a car, Milton, we'll pay nothing. That's included in that, in that, in that monthly cost. So to sum that all up, is it's expensive to install these decorative lights, but they do give you a nice product and it seemed to be the consensus the city council wanted to, to go. The other option we did bring up in our February meeting is, is more of a minimal approach, similar to that what we have at Providence and Freemanville Roundabout. It's for the most part, putting a floodlight, flood type light on an existing timber pole and these would be served by SONI. Costs are very minimal, about $500 per pole, depends on where we laid out poles and how many poles we're going to need. It probably wouldn't meet the standard that we, or tried to design by for the Georgia DOT, but it would provide some light at that roundabout. Much less cost. Install cost is almost insignificant and the annual cost, if you see in the middle of this slide, is anywhere between 16 to $26 a month per pole. So it's substantially less, but that is an option. And as I said, we do have that at Providence and Freemanville Roundabout. Earlier today, we did, I did do a spreadsheet that I think you were provided a copy of that kind of outlined the costs and I think I costed it out for a 12-year period. The initial cost, first year cost for Hopewell-Thompson, if the contractor installs is 185,000. If Georgia Power installs, it's 140,000 at Thompson. And Hamby, the initial cost is 133,000 and some change. And Georgia Power installed would be 80, excuse me, 97,000, over $97,000. I am seeking some guidance tonight because we are ready to begin the process to award the contract for construction. And before we award the contract, we need to know if we're going to include lighting in that, in that award or not. Actually, I hope to present at the next meeting, the bids for construction. So we're asking for some guidance. It's, it's, it's council's choice of which direction that you want to see Milton light up. There is some ideas to keep consistency throughout the city of Milton, not like the Crab Apple area. You've got the very high-profile pedestrian lighting and some shepherd lighting in the Crab Apple area, these being a little further outside of the city limits. Any questions?
Questions for Robert?
I have one. Go ahead.
All right. Laura?
So are the only place that the Shepherd's Crooks are currently that are not in Crab Apple, that's Providence at Birmingham 372?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
And if those fixtures are knocked over, do they, are they replaced by DOT or us?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer. I don't know if we have a lighting agreement with Georgia Power on those or not.
So do they, in Crab Apple, do the Shepherd's Crooks, do they, have they gotten hit?
Not, not a mole. Yeah, we did actually have one hit at the roundabout.
That's what I, okay.
When I first got here, there was one that was hit and I believe Milton paid for that, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe you're correct, Robert. We went after the insurance company for it, but I believe we, we were the ones who initially laid out the money.
That's correct.
And was the price, did I miss that? How much do those fixtures cost? Is that in the analysis, the upfront cost of buying the fixture?
Yes, ma'am. It's, the slide is in front of you. The upfront cost if a contractor installs or the upfront cost if we go through an arrangement with Georgia Power.
Okay. So that includes labor and the product? Okay.
And the materials, yes, ma'am.
And my last question is for the, the spotlight that, what we're utilizing at Providence and Freemanville, that roundabout?
Yes, ma'am.
You said that, that that's not to DOT standard. Is there a way to bring it to, to standard using those spotlights?
It's difficult. It can be done, but then you're putting in a lot of timber poles in along and around the roundabout. And of course, it's not decorative, but it can be. It's a little bit more difficult because it's a different kind of light.
Can you co-locate them on a pole in different directions?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Carol?
Would you repeat that last part, the SONI available lighting option and the cost?
Okay. The slide is up in front of you.
Right.
SONI, you can install these poles and, and the lighting at a very SONI, you can install these poles and, and the lighting at a very minimal cost. The monthly cost is $16 a month for the smaller wattage and 400 watts is $26 a month per pole. I think we have two poles at Freemanville and Providence that are, that have lights attached to them. I think one pole may have two lights as you were talking about co-locating. If we can't find an existing pole to put on, we'll have to drop a timber pole to at least get some lights up.
So how many, how many poles would we need? What are we talking, how many Shepherd's Crooks versus regular poles? Which would give sort of a some light, but not light it up like Walmart?
The shepherd light proposal that we have was done by Georgia Power Lighting, per their standards. We haven't done that application to design the layout for, for the timber lights, for the minimal approach. We would have to hire a lighting engineer to kind of help us, guide us through where the good location for those poles would be. So I don't have a cost for that. It, like I said, is significantly less. It doesn't give you, you know, obviously the decorative look, but I don't have a cost for that. It's substantially less though. Does that answer your question?
It does. Are we doing anything decorative in these roundabouts?
Like the only roundabout that we have so far is Birmingham and Providence that has a Shepherd's. Like everything else, I think, has the, those lights here in front of us.
So I'm, I'm all about things that look good, but I'm also all about the people's money because we're all peoples. So I would be interested in what that cost was, is because, I mean, are you all stuck on the Shepherd's thing?
No, I'm not. I'm basing the cost on that.
Yeah, I think it's kind of overdone and kind of, I mean.
So that's rural to me is, is you use the word minimal.
Right.
And I see these roundabouts back into the more rural areas and I'm fine with the way, and this is my opinion, you know, the way Providence at Freemanville looks, of course, our number one goal, I think, I'd safely say is safety.
Right.
And I don't, you know, anyone wants their, the lights shining in anyone's, you know, but in the more rural areas, you know, I think just it blending in without.
I think we need to see those numbers. It, it can look kind of cutesy with the other, the Shepherd's crook and your kind of equestrian thing and that's kind of sheepish. So, yeah.
Well, I was going to ask, is in terms of what we have today, was any of it covered under a form-based code or a part of some kind of code that we already put in place? Or what, what drove the choices where the Shepherd's hook is currently in use?
A little bit outside of my knowledge, but.
Because how do we make that decision one day and then we turn around and we make a different decision another day? I, I'm not sure I understand what's, what's driving that.
That Shepherd's hook, the only one is on that, that Birmingham and.
That's a D.
That might have been a DOT thing.
Yeah, I was going to say that was a DOT project, so I had to meet the DOT standards.
That makes sense then. So, so was the choice outside of our control?
They paid, they paid for it.
And I would like to add too, that, and I failed to mention this earlier in the presentation, but the all the upfront cost, install cost would be TSPLOST. It wouldn't be funded by MNO. The maintenance and operation budget would fund the monthly service cost and power cost.
Rick?
On the monthly cost, Robert, is that per intersection or is that per light, the 350 and the 225?
That would be per light.
So it would cost, so the cost of power?
No, forgive me. You're wrong. My apologies. It's per the arrangement they provided. So it's 14 lights for Thompson, it's 350 a month and 225 for Hamby is for nine lights. Thank you. I apologize for that.
Versus the 16 bucks?
Correct.
Per light and then multiply it out times 12 months, times infinity and, okay.
Correct.
And so you said the upfront cost per the Freemanville Providence type poles, like 500 a pole? Is that about right?
That's typically what you pay for dropping a pole.
We use about the same poles. That's 14 plus 12, you know, times five, pretty much. Would that be close to what our upfront cost would be?
That's close. And there's going to be some existing poles out there we can use as well.
So that's like, you know, it's pretty much saves 100 grand, I mean, more than 100 grand. Yeah. So, you know, I'm all about saving money, I think, and I think that's prob, this is probably, makes sense.
I think the citizens would rather see us put the money to the park or, I mean, because if you go home, look at Providence and Freemanville and to me, that's a rural roundabout.
I think the overlap thing is where.
Well, thank you. I got our guidance.
All right.
I appreciate that.
I agree.
Thank you very much, Robert.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. All right. Moving on, will City Clerk please sound the first presentation items?
The first item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to adopt amendments to the fiscal year 2020 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number 20248. Second item is the consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and city and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to adopt the fiscal 2021 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia appropriating the several items of revenue appropriations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number 20249. Our third item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 4, Section 138, promotion and sales of alcoholic beverages of the Code of the City of Milton. Agenda item number 20250. Our fourth and final item is the consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Division 4, Section 2, 390, transfer of disposition of assets, notice of the Code of the City of Milton. Agenda item number 20251.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion on the first presentation items?
Mr. Mayor, pro temp. I make a motion that we accept the first presentation as read.
Second?
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Moore and a second from Councilmember Bentley to approve the first presentation items as read. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. And moving on to our public hearing, will City Clerk please sound the first item?
The first item is consideration of the issuance of an alcoholic beverage license to W&amp;H Star Group, Inc. at 13085 Highway 9, Suite 440 in Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number 20252. Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, mayor and council. This evening we have before you an alcohol beverage license request for W&amp;H Star Group doing business as Umi Sushi and Hibachi off Highway 9 for consumption on premises of wine and malt beverages. The applicant is in compliance and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. All right. Will City Clerk please sound the next public?
The next item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to adopt amendments to the fiscal year 2020 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown.
Mr. Mayor, I do think that we need to hold a public hearing, at least announce.
Okay. So on my script, so are we, we're not voting on this tonight though, correct?
Just the alcohol.
Oh, we are voting on it?
Just the alcohol, not the amendments.
Okay.
Yeah, you would be voted after, after the public.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Is there any?
Public comment.
Public comment?
Typically, there would just be a notation of, I'm opening the public hearing, then asking for public comment, then there being none. So just to make note of it on the record.
Okay. So we are voting on this right now, correct?
Just the alcohol beverage issuance, but we will not be voting this evening on the public hearings regarding the budgets.
Okay. Got it. But on agenda item 20252, we're going to vote on that right now. Okay?
If we get a motion.
All right. Is there a motion?
Mayor, pro temp, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item 20-252.
Second.
Ken, are you good with that?
Aye, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley and a second from Councilmember Cookerly to approve agenda item 20-252. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? All right. Thank you.
My apologies for that. That was a mistake in our agenda preparation.
All good.
That wasn't yours.
All right. Will the City Clerk please sound the next public hearing item?
Consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to adopt amendments to the fiscal year 2020 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available, and discussion regarding additional occupational tax revenue received. Agenda item number 20248. Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening again. Tonight we will be discussing the requests included in the fiscal year 2020 amendment number two packet. As you will recall, we went over a brief highlight of these amendments at the August 10th work session. And tonight I'll go into a little more detail on the amendments that are before you this You can see in the summary shown that the revenue anticipations are increasing by 1.9 million dollars. This is an overall increase of 545,857 dollars from the original adopted budget. We will go over the key drivers of this increase in just a moment. Moving down to the expenditures, you will see a decrease of 132,739 dollars outlined in amendment number two's column in the gray. This is an overall decrease of 640,003 dollars from the original adopted budget, when you take transfers out to capital into consideration. The main drivers of this decrease from the original adopted budget include salary and benefit savings as a result of position vacancies, cost savings on purchases, as well as project deferrals. At the end of the year, there is a projected fund balance of 10,064,525 dollars, which is in line with our required reserve policy and takes into consideration the use of surplus fund balance in FY 2021, which we'll discuss in the public hearing regarding the proposed FY 2021 budget in a moment. Milton has been fortunate that although revenues have been impacted, the impact has not been as severe as originally anticipated as a result of COVID-19 and some of the closures of some businesses we have seen. I would like to highlight a couple of the revenue line items that have been impacted and are requested for changes in this amendment. First, title ad valorem tax. House Bill 779 effectively increased the portion of TAVT revenues that will be allocated to all cities across Georgia. This went into effect in July and we are anticipating an increase of 103,785 dollars to this line item. Intangible tax has been coming in higher than anticipated as a result of the increase of real estate loans being issued. You will see a request to increase this line item by 222,099 dollars. Local option sales tax has been impacted, but again, not as severely as we originally anticipated. The increase here of 545,270 dollars will yield an overall anticipated collection of 8.6 million for FY 2020, which is approximately 9% less than we originally anticipated with the 9.4 million dollars that was originally projected. The final request I would like to highlight with the revenues is the 520,868 dollar transfer in from the Revenue Bond Fund. This is to cover bond eligible expenses made on the construction of the Public Safety Complex before the bonds were issued in October. This is a one-time revenue that will not recur next year and we'll be talking about this again later this evening. Before we move on to the expenditure amendments, I would like to take a minute to discuss occupational tax revenue. State law requires that a public hearing must be held whenever revenues exceed those collections in a previous fiscal year. Even with the impacts of COVID-19, Milton's occupational tax revenues are expected to exceed those of the collections from FY 2019. As in years past, any collections beyond our budgeted anticipations that have already been allocated will go into surplus fund balance to be used on non-recurring projects in future years. So it's just a requirement that we discuss that option and have a public hearing regarding it. Moving on to the expenditures. Over the departments, there is a 213,482 dollar decrease related to salary and benefit savings related to those vacancies we discussed. I won't take you line by line through them. They are all in the packet, but that is the total. There are two items I would like to point out related to staffing included in this request. First are the summer intern program. It has been a success. The positions were originally requested in the City Manager Department, but upon implementation of the program, it was deemed a more appropriate fit for the positions to report to community outreach and engagement and the manager in that department. A request to move these two budgeted positions will carry over into the FY 2021 budget as community outreach and engagement seasonal employees should you approve this amendment this evening. And the deputy clerk position has been vacant and there's a request to reclassify the position to that of a records clerk. Again, the reclassification savings will carry over into FY 2021 as well. Other requests of the expenditure lines include a reduction to professional fees in the City Manager Department and the amount of 70,000 dollars. COVID-19 caused a delay to the process, so these funds will be reallocated in FY 2021. You will see a similar request in the Public Works Department related to the citywide traffic count and speed study. This project is underway, but it will carry over into FY 2021. So a reduction in '20 moving into a request in '21. Information Services has identified that the city can delay the transition to the voice-over internet protocol technology, which comes with a savings of 53,000 dollars, as well as the delay in the purchase of scanner equipment in the amount of 14,000 You'll see an increase to the medical supplies line item, which will be offset by anticipated revenues related to the CARES Act funds. And that will be in the fire department here shortly. There we got the very bottom there, 26,250 dollars. And unfortunately, Camp Joyful Souls had to be canceled this year and you will see in the Parks and Recreation Active Department corresponding decreases to the lines, line items related to the program. And finally, regarding the highlights for the expenditures, you'll see a release of the FY 2020 contingency funds to the balance, some of the requests that we've just gone over, as well as a transfer out to the Capital Projects Fund to fund improvements to the passive acres of the former Milton Country Club, to fund the difference related to the bid for the city's comprehensive plan, as well as the creation of a new account in the Passive Parks Department that will set aside money to address improvements needed at passive sites that do not currently have a master plan. An example of this might be the dam repairs on Lackey Road. So anything that might come up, you guys can address those items. We will allocate those funds as you approve those projects. So that covers all of the requests in the general fund for amendment number two. There are memory requests of two of the special event funds and you'll see them right here. First, we have the special revenue fund for special events. As you're aware, the pandemic has had a great impact on our ability to host some of Milton's beloved annual events. Community Outreach and Engagement Manager Courtney Spriggs and I went through the line items to release funds related to cancellations, as well as some of the cost savings she had from some of the events held earlier this year. These funds will go towards funding events in FY 2021. As you know, we are having an impact to our one local hotel, so these funds will be able to help fund those events without having to get a transfer in from the general fund. Event by event details are available in the presentation included in tonight's packet, but I won't go over them right now in any kind of detail unless someone has any questions. The confiscated assets fund has had a request to recognize revenues received in the amount of 25,732 dollars, as well as those identified as eligible for purchase related to confiscated assets in the amount of 21,433 dollars. So as police identify projects that are eligible, we allocate the funding towards those. Here we'll move on to the Capital Projects Fund. The main driver of revenue increase to the Capital Projects Fund is that transfer in from the general fund we talked about in the amount of 393,336 dollars. Staff has identified areas of cost savings that we'll see on the next slide, related to software purchases within Finance and Information Services in the amount of 202,824 dollars. Those monies have been released towards other project requests. We also have the savings from the construction of City Hall in the amount of 46,266 dollars, which will go towards funding the request of 92,000 dollars to purchase a portable generator for City Hall, as well as the necessary electrical work related to using the generator. We have here on the next page, that account we just talked about, the site improvements for passive parks. The total, including that transfer in, is 215,000 set aside to be able to be utilized for some of the passive sites, as well as 250,000 dollars specific to the passive acres at former Milton Country Club to continue the progress on the phased master plan objectives and 45,000 dollars to assess and address repairs needed to the dam on Lackey Road property. Moving on to the green space bond fund. Moving on to the Greenspace Bond Fund, there's a request related to property tax collections as well as interest revenue anticipations and a related true-up to recognize funding related to debt service due. In the TSCBLOS Fund, you will see a revenue amendment related to investment income. As you know, interest rates are down, and we are seeing lower-than-anticipated collections across all the funds in investment income. You'll also see the allocation of $2 million from the fund balance. 100% of all collections in this fund must be spent on projects approved through the referendum or any authorized changes made to the project plan. The recommendation for the Birmingham Middle Bridge has been completed and a replacement -- they have -- sorry, they have recommended a complete replacement of the bridge. So funding is being allocated to this project in anticipation of increased costs from the original project plan. In the Capital Grant Fund, you will see revenues related to a grant orders to the Fire Department for the exhaust extractor systems at Station 41 and 43. Additionally, GDOT has closed the books on the intersection improvements at Birmingham and Providence. Construction expenses were lower than originally anticipated, and the city has received a reimbursement of $85,523, which will be transferred back to the General Fund as operating funds were originally used to fund this portion of the project. And last but not least, we have the Revenue Bond Fund. They have also experienced a decrease in anticipated investment income. There is a reduction of $920,868 to the Public Safety Complex Project, of which 52868 is going to go back to refunding the General Fund for expenses made before the bonds were issued, as we discussed earlier, and $400,000 will go towards the fire station alerting system, which was approved in the bond issuance. I just had to create a new project line item for that. And that is the end of the amendments for FY 2020. And should nothing else change, this should be the final amendment for FY 2020.
All right, thank you. So I'm now going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, so I will close the public hearing, and that's it. We will go on to the next agenda item.
The third item is consideration of the ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Milton, Georgia to adopt the fiscal 2021 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the several items of revenue appropriations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number 20249. Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Okay, now we will move on to the FY 2021 proposed budget. The detailed draft can be found on the city website. The Communications Director, the Graphic Designer and I are working on some final enhancements to the bells and whistles of the book, but all the substantial numbers should not change from here on out. And as a matter of fact, nothing has really changed since the last discussion we had. So I will continue to do an abbreviated presentation this evening. I just wanted to show the calendar once again, so everyone knows the steps we went through. Staff started back in May discussing long-range planning and interim goal setting as we're working towards our new strategic plan. Many of the requests are based on interim goals that stand alone regardless of the larger strategic plan, so we can get the city continuing to move towards some of the goals we've talked about. We've had requests for MNO and operating capital items come in from all the departments. We've discussed them at length with each department head, and then our City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and myself got together and looked over the priorities according to all of our city planning documents and made some decisions. And final decisions were made by the City Manager in this proposed document this evening. We went over in great detail all of the requests back on August 10th, and here we are on the 9th for the first public hearing, and according to state law, we'll have a second public hearing on the 21st, and should you approve it, a vote that evening. So here I just have our consolidated fund summaries. This kind of shows all of the requests across all of the budgeted funds for this year, and you can see that our city has a citywide budget of $41.9 million when you exclude any of the transfers out, because any transfers out and in will zero each other and balance across the citywide consolidated budget. Of course, the main driver of our budget is our General Fund at that $31 million number. Now we'll move on into our General Fund, which is the main driver of the city's budget. Is that too big? Sorry. All right, much better. So again, there have been no material changes made since the conversation back on the 10th. We did remove the transfer in from the Capital Projects Fund, so overall anticipated revenues are now $29,511,367 for fiscal year 2021. The overall decrease to revenues stands at 3.3%, with the largest impact coming from one-time inter-fund transfers in from the Revenue Bond Fund that we just went over that will not recur in FY 2021. There have been no changes to the operating expenditures from our conversation back on the 10th, and there is a slight decrease of $43,146 to the operating transfer out category. This yields an overall request of $31,140,44 in operating expenditures, or a 6% variance year-over-year. I would like to momentarily return to the discussion we just had surrounding FY 2020's adopted budget. The original budget for FY 2020 was $31,603,756. Of this, $26,709,238 went toward operating expenses excluding the transfers out. The FY 2021 proposed operating budget excluding transfers represents an 8% decrease from that original adopted budget in 2020, or a budgeted savings of $2 million. The requests seen here include a budgeted use of surplus fund balance, and please note that those surplus funds can only be used for one-time expenses and will go towards funding the transfers to the Capital Projects Fund that you can see right here at $6.6 Additionally, in this request is an adjustment to salaries of 3%, which will total $250,626, a transfer out of $1.7 million to the Revenue Bond Fund for debt service due on Bond Series 2019, which will be funded through general operating funds. And now I'm going to skip through the department-by-department variances. I have all the documents here if we need to discuss them, but I'm going to skip down to the MNO operating initiatives -- sorry, maintenance and operating initiatives. Included in this operating request that we just discussed is all of these initiatives at $422,606, 200,000 of which will be set aside to address year-one initiatives that come out as a strategic planning process that our citizens, our staff, our council, and all of our stakeholders will be a part of. There is a request to staff Station 44 at the end of the fiscal year. Public Works has requested funding for a pilot street sweeping program for areas in the city with curb and gutter. They're also looking to obtain a backhoe and dump truck. Here we have the related maintenance and insurance costs that these purchases will save the city some money versus continued rentals of the equipment with a break-even in years seven and four respectively. Community Development has also identified some savings by bringing the Soil and Erosion Control Manager in-house and is looking to reclassify the planning technician to Planner One, enabling staff to handle more projects in-house and further reducing expenses related to consultants. Since we've discussed the special revenue funds and the capital projects ongoing in great detail, I'm going to now skip down to the capital initiatives. Here again, we have the cost to purchase the backhoe and dump truck at $238,000 total, and the truck for the Soil and Erosion Control Manager at $35,485. And again, we have the actual cost to purchase the Public Works equipment, so this would be our overall savings after year four and seven. So those are all the requests related to the FY 2021 proposed budget. I'll be happy to go over any of the details, should you'd like to.
All right. Thank you. I'm now going to open for the public hearing. If anyone's here to speak in approval or opposition? Do we have any? All right, I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to the next item.
Our fourth item is consideration of a resolution transmitting a draft capital improvements element known as the CIE 2020 Annual Update relating to the city's impact fee program to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Regional and State Review. Agenda item number 53. Mr. Parag Agarwal.
Hold on, hold on. We all knew that was going to happen.
Mayor Protem and City Council members, today we are here in front of you to initiate a public hearing to transmit the capital improvement element annual update for 2022 to the Atlanta Regional Commission for the regional review and to the state for the state review. It's as per the state law, every community that has the impact free program in place, they have to update their capital improvement element every year. And basically, what this annual update does, it basically updates the list of capital projects which are funded through the impact free program. Today, we also have Bill Ross here with us from Ross and Associates. Bill is basically the founding father of the impact free program for City of Milton, and he will tell us a bit more about the changes that have been made in this annual update.
One second. I have to do this. I have to do this.
Thank you. I'm Bill Ross with Ross Associates. He just said everything I was going to say. Annual report, you've seen him every year, has to go to the state. Public hearings require to send it in for review for your constant annual recertification. If there are any questions at all, or if anything comes up in the public hearing, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. I know we're going to vote on it later tonight. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak in favor or in opposition? All right, I will close the public hearing. All right, we'll -- moving on to our zoning agenda. Will the city clerk please read the zoning rules and sound the zoning items?
When the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda, the following rules apply. Those zoning agenda items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associating concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The opposition will also be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present its position. If time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut. Our first zoning item is consideration of RZ 20-10 to amend Section 64-1, definitions as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Agenda item number 20229. Next is the consideration of RZ 20-11 to amend Section 64-775, Use Regulations, C1, Community Businesses, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Agenda item number 20230. The third item is consideration of the RZ 20-12 to create 64-1608.1, Temporary Consumer Fireworks Retail Sales Facilities Administrative Use Permit. Agenda item number 20231. The fourth item is the consideration of RZ 20-13 to amend Article 19, Crab Apple Form Based Code Definitions, Article 6.1, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Agenda item number 20232. Our fifth zoning item is consideration of RZ 20-14 to amend Article 19, Crab Apple Form Based Code, Article 5, Table 9, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Agenda item number 20233. Our sixth item is the consideration of an RZ 20-15 to amend Article 20, Deerfield Form Based Code Definitions, Article 6.1, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Agenda item number 20234. Our seventh and final zoning item is the consideration of an RZ 20-16 to amend Article 20, Deerfield Form Based Code, Article 5, Table 10, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Agenda item number 20235. Mr. Parag Agarwal and Ms. Robin McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council. Thank you for giving this opportunity for the Community Development Department to present this series of text amendments. I hope it didn't scare you with all the items. I hopefully can explain it all and make sense and not have to deal with it for too long. So the primary purpose of these text amendments is to create a separate administrative permit solely for temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. The Planning Commission at its June 22nd meeting unanimously approved the text amendments after a lengthy deliberation. The city attorney and the fire marshal worked closely with us, with staff, for the creation of these text amendments, and they were also present at the Planning Commission to be able to answer any of their questions and give input as needed. In addition, we're asking you to consider cleanup of the administrative permit of seasonal business use to include limited form-based code transect zones. The following slides are a short description of each text amendment and how they contribute to the overall goal described above. So I like to compare it to the ingredients of baking a cake. So we have several different ingredients that in the end is creating what we need to enforce this new administrative permit. Under RZ 2010, it is to amend the definitions of the zoning ordinance, and we're proposing a couple of new definitions, and the first one would be temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facility. So it defines it as is used primarily for the retail display and sale of consumer fireworks to the public. Excluded from this definition is any nonstructural consumer fireworks retail sales facility. Another new definition is nonstructural consumer fireworks retail sales facility as created to be an excluded use in all zoning districts. So basically, this is a description or a definition of a trailer towed by a motor vehicle or a tent, canopy, or membrane, any thin, flexible, or foldable layer of material used to block sun, wind, or water, structure in which consumer fireworks are offered for sale to the public. So this is what we do not want at all within the city. It's somebody threw up a tent or, you know, brought in their back of their truck and started selling fireworks. That is not permitted at all within the city. A text amendment, well, let me preface that. We have the definition. Once we were working on what needed to be done, we need to bring forward a section of the zoning ordinance, uses prohibited in all zoning districts, and that's what that definition or that term will be put into that section in the upcoming zoning cycle. So in a couple of months, you'll just see one independent text amendment that's leftover of these fireworks set of amendments. And then within the definition of roadside vending, it excludes temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facility. Going on to RZ 2011, this is to amend the C1 zoning district. Basically excludes temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facility from that zoning district. Also, staff notes that there are only a handful locations on C1 within the city, primarily the Birmingham Crossroads, which has C1 within all four corners. So that would be excluded or not allowed to have sales of temporary fireworks facilities at that in C1. Going on under RZ 2012 to amend Section 64-1609, this is the section that's cleaning up the seasonal business use. When we did all the additions of the form-based code, we did not include the Crab Apple Form Based Code, T5, and Deerfield Form Based Code, T5 and T6. So examples of that would be the Christmas tree stands at Home Depot or pumpkin sales. I think they did that at the corner by the CVS at Bethany Bend and Nine. So that's a different administrative permit. We're just cleaning it up. Okay, to the guts of it, to the flour of the cake, shall I say. RZ 2012, creating 64-1609.1, Temporary Consumer Fireworks Retail Sales Facilities. And so just want to talk about primarily where we will -- where we're proposing to allow it to happen is in -- within Crab Apple Form area is the T5, and as you can see, the very dark purple is T5. And as you can see, the very dark purple is T5 right here at the intersection on the east side of Birmingham Road, down to the west on the north. There's a little piece to the south, I believe where the pizza shop is and a few offices. And then if you want to go further west, the linear area along Arnold Mill. Well, I would like to say most of that linear area, except below Green Road, has been developed with residential, as well as much of the T6 has already been developed with mixed use. And on to the Deerfield Form Based Code, we're proposing allowing this new administrative permit for the temporary sales facility to be in T5 and T6. So let's look at the Deerfield area down by Windward. So in a Highway 9, T5 is the lighter of the purple here along, it's a linear area along Highway 9, up to Bethany Bend to where the CVS is. And then T6, which is all of Windward, I mean Deerfield, Office Park, Verizon, that area. And then let's look to the south. Sometimes we forget about North Main Street, but we do have a section of that area that is T5. And there is a brand-new self-storage here in the front on the north side of Highway 9, as well as there's a mixed-use shopping center to the south. And there's a tiny little undeveloped piece over here, a little bit to the east. So these are the areas that we're proposing to allow this fire, temporary fireworks facility. Along with looking at where it's loca, can be located, we're creating development regulations that include design standards dealing with color. We're requiring it either to be white or off-white. The size of the structure shall be no larger than 800 square feet and 15 feet in height. I believe the 800 square feet is driven by the fire code, the state fire code. So the signage, maximum 24-square-foot banner, and there is some signage that's required by the state fire law that needs to be on the facility as well. And then further required distance from other temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Typically, we've only had one in the past few years at 4th of July. Agricultural-related uses such as farms, equestrian and veterinarian facilities, and healthcare facilities. So I forgot to write down there that it's within 300 feet. Okay? So those are the development standards or requirements for this administrative permit. So in regards to RZ 2013 and 2015 Crab Apple and Deerfield Form Based Code definitions, we have separate definitions within those sections of the code. But after further considerations, these were no longer needed, and we're asking council to recommend withdrawal of RZ 20-13 and RZ 20-15 at the time that you make your votes. So we'll go back to RZ 2014 to amend Crab Apple Form Based Code, Table 9. So I don't know if you've ever seen or looked at it, but we have a big grid with all the different uses that are permitted in the different transect zones. And instead of let, you know, going through the whole table and including every kind of administrative permit and use permit, we just put a statement at the top of that table stating that go to the administrative and use permits to see what is permitted in the transect zone, in the form-based codes. Okay? So within our ordinance, in whether it's use permits or administrative permits, there's a section that talks about what is permitted by zoning district. So therefore, that's just a short line that goes on each, the Crab Apple Form Based Code as well as the Deerfield Form Based Code. Same issue with RZ 2016. So with that, I will be open to any questions you may have or comments or suggestions.
Questions for staff? Rick?
Just a question in the Deerfield area. I think that's one of the areas that we've seen these facilities go up every year, right on the corner of CVS. Does this preclude this, or does this now allow them to still do the same thing, but it has to be a white building within the standards?
Correct, the lighter that you said.
Okay, so all these different areas they could, that are the dark purple, they could in fact put up stands?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Okay, so for example, Thompson and Hopewell, where the, that's still, is that zone historic?
Correct.
Where the Hardeman store, okay, so, so we don't need to prohibit temporary stands there, or do we?
So we kind of have used our belt and suspenders and all those C1 that we excluded it. But if you look at the actual verbiage of RZ 2012, it states at the top of the administrative permit, it said required districts Crab Apple, at this point, I mean, this is up to y'all, Crab Apple Form Based Code, T5 transect zone, Deerfield Form Based Code, T5 and T6 transect zones, not allowable elsewhere. So stating within this administrative permit, it's only allowed in the form-based code areas.
What you just listed?
Yes.
What you just said.
Correct.
So it's not in T4, it's not in T4 open?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, correct. It's in T5 for Crab Apple, which is the highest.
Yep.
Transect zone. It's in T5 and T6 and Deerfield, which is the top two highest categories.
Okay, thank you. That, so we're covered by specifying that, all right. One thing that I observed on the use that's currently taking place is camping, overnight stays.
Camping, you said?
Mm-hmm. So can we add something?
That no overnight camping or overnight stays?
Sure.
We can.
What's in regards to?
So the stand that was located at the CVS, so one year they stayed overnight.
Oh, okay, the fireworks, okay. Okay.
So if we could include?
Do you want to include some hours of operations or something like this?
There are hours of operation already exist, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
So that would be covered by?
Well, but I think what's saying, what she's saying is people, they do it a lot of times with trees, Christmas trees as well, they'll stay overnight. So we could just say no overnight stay permitted.
But can you, if it's on the prop, if it's on that prop, is the property in, or is that not allowed for some, doesn't?
I mean, I guess it could be part of their lease or their rental agreement, but we can't really control what.
That's what I was wondering, if that can even be controlled.
They might worry about theft. Yeah, it's an open thing.
Members of the council, let me, let me offer up that we might want to take a look at this to see if other Milton regulations already prohibit that conduct as opposed to possibly making it part of this ordinance. I suspect there are. I mean, that just seems on its face to possibly offend.
I know there's a no camping section.
We have an urban camping section.
No, or, so I haven't really looked at it, so I don't know.
I don't know it off the top of my head, but we're looking to.
Right, right. Rather than making new code up on the fly, it might be best that if this is an issue, we can certainly address it, but I think it may already be addressed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, sure. So, Robin, let's say we pass all these things. You compared this to being all of the ingredients that you needed to make a cake. What is the, what is the ultimate benefit for the city? We've got more control over exactly what's going on?
Correct.
Okay. So let's pretend for a second that the control we really wanted to exert is to not allow these types of operations, either permanent or temporary. Does it give us the power to do that?
It can, we cannot exclude it, I don't think.
Councilmember Longoria, we looked at that quite a bit. There was really no way to do that effectively without putting within the same confines a lot of activity that is generally perceived as acceptable in Milton. So we did the best we could, and this was based upon my guidance.
I don't want to be argumentative, Ken. Did we pass ordinances that essentially prohibited the sale of vaping products in the city of Milton and prohibited having vape shops in the city of Milton?
I believe so.
So, so selling fireworks is different in what way from that type of retail operation?
I think that the problem is, is that the ability to have a roadside sales environment is something that is, in a lot of ways, fits into sort of the bucolic character of Milton, you know, the roadside vegetable stand, the roadside, listen.
No, no, I agree with you that the challenge that we have, and one of the things that is causing me difficulty, is that we routinely talk about the fact that Milton is an equestrian city as well as a, you know, rurally themed city. We could go down the list of those things. But, but the fact is, we do have a lot of horses in Milton. Okay? And we've got a lot of property that's devoted to horses. And fireworks and horses just don't mix. We spend time communicating before the 4th of July, before Labor, I mean, before Memorial Day, before all these different dates, please don't fire fireworks between these times or in these areas and those kinds of things. And so I find it interesting that we're not taking more proactive steps to restrict that even further.
Well, okay, and you're, right, you're now delving into use, and the General Assembly has.
No, 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 I get it. Using the fireworks, it doesn't matter where they bought them. Okay? And we can't control that because that's a state-controlled thing. But promote, I mean, it's like, again, getting back to my vaping example, people can still go buy vaping products in Alpharetta or in Rosewell and use them here in Milton. We didn't outlaw the use, but we stood up for what we believe is correct, and we prohibited the sale within the city limits.
Right, but neither of those products, I mean, you know, the General Assembly has been fairly clear, they have not completely dominated the field with respect to firework regulation, but they have certainly shown an interest in it as opposed to, say, vaping, which they have shown very little interest in. So I do think there are.
Okay.
Differences with respect to the two sorts of products. I think Milton, Milton has done a very good job of attempting to really address in almost an ironclad way all of the negative attributes, the garrishness, all of the things that a lot of folks find distasteful about those facilities.
So then is it fair to say, Ken, that these changes get us in a position of as much control as is possible and gives us the flexibility to deal with this to the extent that we can?
I agree with that.
Okay.
Because that was the charge that I was given by your staff.
All right.
And that's what I've attempted to do and guide your staff on. So yes, council member, I agree with you.
Hey, Rick?
Yeah, and I guess to say it a different way, what you're telling us is there's no way, I know we can't prohibit retail sales with like in Walmart and different existing shops, but as far as a temporary stand, we can't just totally say no fireworks, temporary fireworks stands.
I could not get comfortable with that conclusion, correct?
Okay.
But the only thing which I do see, and even if we are allowing temporary stands on some locations, we do have design standards in place so that, A, we are, we are limiting the locations where they can go, and second, we are trying to put some design standards in place, even if they go, they will have to look the best possible stands possible. Right? So it's a dual approach.
And to go on your point, and I totally agree with both of you, but if we put all these design standards on these fireworks stands?
They might go out of business, yeah.
Right, right. It raises the bar, it gets more difficult to participate, yeah.
Especially if they can't sleep there.
I'm sorry?
Especially if they can't spend the night there.
Right.
Watch their, their inventory. I mean, that's why they're staying there. So, but, you know, I appreciate, you know, just reiterating, you know, I got a lot of comments, you know, why wouldn't you just ban this, you know, altogether? And I know it's frustrating, especially for the equestrians in the community, to be able to, to have these stands, but if this is the closest we can get to making it, you know, something that's not an easy thing to come here and do, I think this, this is an improvement.
Tammy, is there any public comment on any of these agenda items?
No.
Yeah, that's a great question, Mayor Pro Tem, and this is something where I do need to jump in. So what Ms. McDonald did, it made good sense, was to give you an omnibus presentation under one agenda item. All right, so that's great, but not so fast. So I do think what needs to happen, Mayor Pro Tem, is you need to, just as you did, ask for the public hearing with respect to Agenda Item 20229, close it, because the clerk needs to make a, a note that everyone, we had an opening and closing of the public hearing. I think this will be fast, and I forgive, forgive me for having to go through it that way, but I think she needs to sound the item, ask for the public comment. Ms. McDonald's presentation will be the same for each one, let the record reflect.
Pretty much just read my script the way it says.
Oh, is that what it says?
I mean, just through those, okay.
Every item.
All right, thank you.
Do you want me to reread the items?
Sorry.
Do you need the item reread?
The first agenda item? No, I don't need the first agenda item, but I do need 2, 3, 4, 5, the rest of them. So right now, all we need to do is, is, you know, ask for any public comment, see if there's any. If not, shut it down, read the next item, same thing, watch.
But we'll vote on each, we'll vote on each one?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, so we're on Agenda Item Number 229. Since there's no public comment, we will close the public hearing and open it up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 20-229.
Second. All right, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving, I gotta read this right, I don't want to mess it up, Ken get me in trouble. All right, we have motion to approve RZ 20-10 to amend Section 64-1, definitions as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks and retail sales facilities. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, the city clerk will sound the next item.
The second item is consideration of RZ 2011 to amend Section 64-775, use regulations, C1, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Agenda Item Number 20230.
All right, is there any public comment on this?
Please not, Mayor.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing and open it up for a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20-230.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Cookerly to approve RZ 20-11 to amend Section 64-775, use regulations, C1, community business, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, if.
The third item is consideration of RZ 2012 to create 64-1608.1, temporary consumer firework retail sales facilities administrative use permit. Agenda Item Number 20231.
All right, is there any public comment?
There are none.
All right, so I will close the public hearing and open it up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. You're quicker than I was.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 20-231.
All right, I have a, I'm sorry, I was getting ahead of myself. All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Morg, a second from Councilmember Longoria to approve RZ 20-12 to, to create 64-1608.1, temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities administrative use permit. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay.
The fourth item is consideration of RZ 2013 to amend Article 19 Crab Apple Form Based Code definitions, Article 6.1, as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. Agenda Item Number 20232.
All right, any public comment?
There are none.
All right, I'll close the public hearing, I'll open it up for a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw Agenda Item Number 20-232.
Is that correct? Okay. All right, uh, second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. You good with that?
Well...
Okay. Discussion?
So 13 and, staff's recommending 13 and 15.
Right, okay. Yeah, when I said that earlier, that we wanted to approve them all, I would cut myself confused, okay? I'd stand by my second.
So that's withdrawal, okay. So I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Longoria to withdraw RZ 20-13 to amend Article 19 Crab Apple Form Based Code Definitions Article 6.1 as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks and retail sales facilities. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, next one.
Our fifth item is consideration of RZ 2014 to amend Article 19 Crab Apple Form Based Code Article 5 Table 9 as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities, Agenda Item Number 20233.
All right, any public comment?
There are none.
All right, I'll close the public hearing and open for a motion.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20-233.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley and a second from Councilmember Cokerly to approve RZ dash, or RZ 20-14 to amend Article 19 Crab Apple Form Based Code Article 5 Table 9 as relates to creation of temporary consumer fireworks and retail sales facilities. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Next one.
This excited is consideration of RZ 2015 to amend Article 20 Deerfield Form Based Code Definitions Article 6.1 as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer firework retail sales facilities, Agenda Item Number 20234.
Okay, any public comment?
There are none.
All right, I'll close the public hearing and open for a motion.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw Agenda Item Number 20-234.
Okay. All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Longoria to withdraw RZ 20-15 to amend Article 20 Deerfield Form Based Code Definitions Article 6.1 as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks and retail sales facilities. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And the next one?
Our seventh and final zoning item is consideration of RZ 2016 to amend Article 20 Deerfield Form Based Code Article 5 Table 10 as it relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities, Agenda Item Number 20235.
Any public comment?
There are none.
All right, I'll close the public hearing and open for a motion.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20-235.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Morgue to approve RZ 20-16 to amend Article 20 Deerfield Form Based Code Article 5 Table 10 as relates to the creation of temporary consumer fireworks retail sales facilities. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. And since there are no items under unfinished business, we will move on to our new business items. Will the city clerk please sound the first item?
Consideration of a resolution transmitting a draft capital improvements element 2020 annual update relating to the city's impact fee program to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Regional and State Review, Agenda Item Number 20253, Mr. Parag Agarwal.
Mayor and the city council members, today we have a resolution in front of you to transmit the annual update of the capital improvement element to the Atlanta Regional Commission for the regional review and to the Department of Community Affairs for the state review. As I mentioned, it is the state law that every community that has an impact fee program in place, they have to update the, they have to update the capital improvement element on an annual basis. Uh, apart from this, our department is, uh, launching a new project that will basically update our impact fee ordinance next year, next year. So again, that will basically look at the new, new capital projects that could be funded through the impact fee programs and how can we incorporate more flexibility into the city's program. But the, but the resolution that's in front of you is basically, uh, annual update, CIE update, that should be transmitted to the ARC and to the DCA.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Parag? All right, is there any public comment?
There are none.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing on, our public hearing on that, um, and open it for a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 20-253.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Morgue and a second from Councilmember Bentley to approve a resolution transmitting a draft capital improvement element 2020 annual update relating to the city's impact fee program to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Regional and State Review. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Uh, will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Consideration of an amended emergency ordinance of the mayor's council of the city of Milton, Georgia, under Section 3.1 of the Charter of the City of Milton, Georgia, to provide the operation of the city of Milton, Georgia during the public emergency known as the novel corona, coronavirus disease 2019 global pandemic, to become effective upon adoption by the council, just to supersede the existing emergency ordinance and for other purposes, Agenda Item Number 20254, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, thank you very much. You have quite a bit of experience with respect to this particular ordinance, uh, at this point. You may recall that the city council originally adopted an emergency ordinance in March of this year, March 16th, to be specific. Uh, I don't know what number, uh, of this version that we are on, but it's been quite a few. Uh, all, as the city charter requires, we adopt these in 30-day increments, which is appropriate, we have to continually reassess, uh, and what we have sort of contended ourselves as doing, and many governments, local governments have done the same, is to run our state of a locally declared emergency cotermines with the governors statewide declaration of emergency, which, which was in fact continued and will run from September 10th until October 10th of 2020. And so it is my recommendation, uh, just to have sort of a belt and suspenders approach to how Milton operates, that we do the same. I will tell you, members of the council, that as this ordinance was originally conceived, it was quite robust. Uh, Milton has taken a very pro-business, uh, sort of outlook with respect to use of our emergency powers to address businesses that have been negatively impacted by COVID-19. And while we had a lot of different sorts of relief measures in some of the earlier iterations of the ordinance, we're now down to basically just two, which is the continued allowance of to-go malt beverage and wine sales from restaurants with consumption on-premise licensure, as well as certain additional signage opportunities for retail businesses. That's really all we're doing. We obviously have put in place our reopening plan for some months now. It is my recommendation, however, that we continue to run cotermines with the statewide emergency. I feel like there's little downside and could be some, or little up, a little upside, a lot of upside, little downside to continuing to do that. So that is my recommendation, Mr. Mayor Protem.
All right, any questions? All right, any public comment on this, Tammy?
There are none.
All right, I'll close the public hearing, open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 20-254.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Cokerly, a second from Councilmember Morgue to approve an amended emergency ordinance of the, of the Mayor Protem and Council of the city of Milton and Georgia under Section 3.18 of the Charter of the city of Milton, Georgia, to provide the operation of the city of Milton, Georgia during the public emergency known as the novel coronavirus disease 2019 global pandemic, to become effective upon adoption of the council, by the council, to supersede the existing emergency ordinance and for other purposes. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, if, uh, moving on to our final new business item, will the city clerk please sound the item?
It's the approval of a subdivision plat and revision. The name of the development is 15060 Freemanville Road, land lot number 554 and 555. It's a final plat with eight lot subdivision with gated private street. The total acres is 2.58, and it's a 0.325 density lot per acre.
Uh, Mayor Protem and city council members, before we make a presentation on this final plat, I would like to introduce you to the newest member of the department, Tracy Weis. She is the land development manager in our department in place of Melissa, who left us a few months back. Uh, Tracy is a landscape architect. She has more than, uh, 10 years of experience, experience working in the private sector. Uh, she has a strong focus on customer service. Everyone in the city of Milton already loves her, and she is basically responsible for issuing the land development permits and reviewing and issuing all the plats. On a side note, she's also the twin sister of Tammy, and basically they were, uh, they were discussing today that how can Tracy take over Tammy and how can Tammy take over Tracy's position? Uh, but anyway, so she, she, it's her first presentation to the city council, so we have a small presentation to discuss the plat and how it meets all the city code requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you, Parag. Um, I'm happy to be here tonight. The entire staff has been very welcoming since I've gotten here. There's a lot of exciting things happening in, in the city of Milton, and so I'm happy and proud and thrilled to be a part of the team. Uh, tonight, we're going to present to you a final plat. Um, it's been a while, I understand, since we've presented a final plat to the city council, I think due to COVID and, and those types of things. And as a reminder, um, if a plat contains more than four lots, then it's considered a final plat and, uh, is presented to the city council for approval. So this is Deer Haven Preserve. Um, it is a final plat. We could do the next side. Oh, I got it. Okay, excellent. Uh, it is a final plat with, uh, an eight lot subdivision with gated private street on 24.58 acres with a total density of .325 lots per acre. It is located off of Freemanville Road, highlighted here, just south of White Columns Drive. The plat itself is eight estate lots that range in size from two acres to 4.66 acres. Uh, to take a closer look, um, this is a gated subdivision. Deer Haven Lane is a single private road that has a 50-foot access utility easement with 24-foot wide pavement and rollback curbing. Uh, the plat does meet site distance requirements, and there are local and state buffers on the property, but the plat does meet all of our codes. This, again, is just the summary of the site info. The zoning is AG1. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
All right, any questions before public comment? Okay. Go, Mar.
I just want to make a comment, especially, um, I would love if the property owners that own this, this was part of a farm, and they, they sold this off, and, um, so very happy to see three, three acre, um, subdivision lots, which is phenomenal in the market that we're experiencing now in Milton, what, what they forewent to have a large lot subdivision. So maybe we can have a special day for people that do stuff like this, but it's wonderful and it's what Milton's all about, so.
Absolutely. Any other questions? All right, any public comment?
There are none.
Good. All right, I will close the public hearing and open it for a motion.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20-255.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Morgue to approve Agenda Item Number 20-255. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll move it on to council reports. There is one item that we need to, uh, that we'd like to talk about and tell the citizens. Um, as many of you know, the Georgia Department of Transportation is considering building a four-legged mini roundabout in Birmingham Crossroads, specifically where Birmingham Highway intersects with Hickory Flat and Birmingham Roads. This is a GDOT project, so it is not funded or controlled by the city. Still, we do want our residents to have the opportunity to voice their opinions. They can do so by going to our City of Milton website. At the homepage, scroll to the bottom, click on the word news, and there you can review the GDOT information and have access to the GDOT web link for you to submit your comments, questions, or concerns. It's important that there is a very limited time for people to leave a comment. In fact, Friday is the last day, so you, if you have an opinion, please go onto the GDOT website very soon. I know that's an important, uh, project we have going on, and I'm glad we're trying to give as much information out there to the citizens. Um, any other council reports? All right, we will move on to staff reports. Public Works?
Good evening again, Mayor Protem and council. Uh, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Mayor Protem, because that was one of the items that I wanted to, to bring up to you as the closing period for the comments, so thank you for doing that. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we do have bids, we've opened bids for the construction of the roundabouts at Thompson and the roundabout at, at Hamby, and hope to be presenting that to you at the next council meeting for award. And we also opened bids up for the Public Works Maintenance and Operations contract, and that should be presented to you as well at the next, uh, city council meeting. Road resurfacing and road reconstruction is finally going to be underway fairly soon. Uh, we're expecting them to begin probably within the next couple of weeks. Uh, we will, uh, post on social media any traveling impacts that'll be out there, and there will be some, particularly when they're working on Hopewell and Providence. Uh, you did mention the, the comment period, thank you. The bid for the, uh, repair of Saddle Springs Box Culvert is now out on the streets, so we'll be presenting that to you in, uh, four, five, six weeks, something to that extent, so that's, that's a pretty big project as well. Rightaway permits, we issued 14 rightaway permits for the month of August, and two of those were driveways, residential driveways, and 12 of those were, uh, rightaway permits of work within the rightaway. And maintenance, we only had 84 work orders. I say only because that's actually kind of low for what we're used to getting. We usually average about 100, 115. Uh, most of those were potholes and sign issues. Uh, we did have some debris and trash removal scattered throughout, uh, Milton, and we did have eight, eight dead animals. I know you like hearing that. So that, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to help you answer them.
Thank you. Any questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. Um, just a few items. So our administration has moved into the new public safety complex on the admin side. Um, we're getting settled in there. The, um, the station is not ready to move into yet. Um, we're still waiting for the, uh, station alerting system to be finalized at project so we can alert the firefighters of a call. So once that occurs, Engine 42 will move to Station 44, and we'll leave the rescue at Station 42 until we decommission that station. This way, all our facilities have a unit in there and firefighters available for response. Um, what, once that unit, uh, the station's decommissioned, Rescue 42 will then move to Station 44, and we'll realign our zones through dispatch for the quickest unit response to make sure we have proper coverage. Um, with that, we've started our, um, design on Station 42 with Croft and Associates. Um, we've already had about four meetings, we have another one on Monday, so we're excited about that project moving along as quickly as it is. And, uh, Georgia Firefighters Standards and Training has done their annual review of our department. They look at the fire department, the station, the apparatus, as well as all our training records, and once again, we got a perfect score, so we're pretty proud of that. And we completed our ISO review last month, and we expect to have our new rating within six to eight months. They're a little bit behind, everything's virtual, so it takes a little bit longer for them to go ahead and process that, but we're hoping that we, uh, we improve, maintain or at least, or improve our, our rating from our, our Class II, so. And on Friday, September 11th, since the COVID and there's no real, um, ceremonies for, um, 9/11, we are going to do each fire station, the firefighter's going to raise the American flag to half-staff at 8:46 in the morning. We'll get pictures of that, and we'll be doing that at Station 44 as well, along with the, um, police department. And that's all I have for tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks. Rick?
Just one quick question, is the, we've been kind of sharing, I guess with Alpharetta, the ladder, ladder truck is housed at their station, is that moving over to 44 also?
Not until next year. Um, we had an agreement with them, and we've talked to them, it started three years ago when we started
The bill.
The project, and when we were designing it and all of that, that they asked that we give them time to fill that void that will be created by that ladder truck. So they asked if we could keep that there until July of '21.
Okay.
They've already started the design and of their new ladder truck. They're going to be putting a new truck in there because of the Avalon area. They need to keep a ladder or an aerial apparatus there. So they're doing that, and they'll have to hire additional personnel as well. So.
Okay, thank you.
When is the move-in? When will that equipment be ready for move-in?
As soon as that station alerting system is completed. I'm hoping in the next two weeks. They started testing this morning. They did run into a couple of problems, but I'm hoping in the next two weeks, yeah. It was supposed to be last Friday, but we ran into a couple glitches, and so we're working through that. But that, that's the most important piece, is that we have the alerting so we can alert our firefighters, so.
Congratulations on your perfect score.
Thank you. It's, it's, it's not me, it's, it's the crew.
My, it is you, but it's the whole group. Congratulations, all.
They do, they do great work and maintain great records, and we're really proud of that. So we've had a perfect score, as far as I can remember.
I know. Very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I have just a few things to tell you about that we've been up to. We've actually been able to host two outdoor events at Broadwell Pavilion while maintaining the appropriate CDC recommendations. We had the Chambers Chairman Circle After Hours Event, and then also the Milton Business Council had their first after-hours event last week. And tomorrow, weather permitting, we're going to do it on the plaza outside, but we're going to have our launch, which is the biannual event where we invite our businesses that are two years old or less to come to City Hall and meet city staff and the Milton Business Council in the North Fulton Chamber. So that's tomorrow. We are also planning on having our Meet Me in Milton on October 17th. Out on the Green, we're going to do a movie. So again, to attempt to keep people away from each other. And then, very exciting, we got final confirmation at the end of August at Phillips Healthcare. They had an expansion of 88 new jobs with an average of $100,000 salary over in the Deerfield area.
Any questions for Sarah? Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss land acquisition, personnel, and potential litigation.
So moved.
All right, motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Where is that going to be, community?
Good question.
Yeah, we'll go back.
Okay.